Hello, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Finance Audit Subcommittee. Today is May 5th, 6:00 P. M. And we're also via WebEx and in person live in the Board of Ed conference room. Members of the public, to, I'm not sure if I need to read this, but to view or listen by phone, you need to use the WebEx link that's on the agenda. Or by phone, you can dial in 510-338-9438 and enter the meeting number 624-512-956. And we will go on to our first item on the agenda, which is call to order. Since we have a second meeting behind this, we will wait to do the Pledge of Allegiance with the Board of Finance. So we will go to item number two, to hear, consider, and approve the draft meeting minutes for February 1st, 2022. Okay, we have a motion to put them before us. I have a second from John Matola. Is there any discussion? Okay, so I will take a motion on the minutes of February 1st, 2022. All in favor? Aye. The motion carries three in favor, no abstentions, no noes. Item number three on the agenda, to hear, consider, and recommend to the Board of Finance the acceptance of the bid and reappointment of the independent auditors for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. We have with us today our purchasing director Gerald Foley. And he will, he can walk us through this item. Gerald?
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody. So before you, for your consideration is a submission that the town received concerning the annual auditing services. The submission is from the incumbent auditor, which is PKF O'Connor Davies. The submission that they presented or offered to the town is a five-year offering. Basically, it's in line with the services that they currently provide. And they've offered to provide those services on an annual basis for a slight increase in their current fee. But it's, it is a competitive fee offering. Unfortunately, given the climate in the, I guess we'll call it the auditing market, they were the only firm that participated in this RFP process. And as a result of the initial RFP, I extended the deadline for the submissions an additional two weeks and attempted to solicit other firms to participate. Unfortunately, no other term, other firms did participate. And this was the only firm that ended up submitting an offer to the town. Subsequent to the opening of the submissions, I did contact, I think it was either four or five other firms to get feedback in terms of why they did not participate. And basically, I received a mixed, mixed feedback from them. But the majority of them were saying that the current clients that they have, they did not have adequate staffing to undertake and/or take on additional clients. The other issue that was presented was the timing of the audit. The way that the town, Town of Fairfield's audit is, is your first year, it's, this isn't uncommon, but when it's a new firm coming in, it's an aggressive schedule to get their audit complete before the end of the calendar year. So two of the companies that I contacted had told me that in the first year, it would typically take them longer to submit the audit. So hence, they're already at a disadvantage because they can't meet our schedule. So that being said, they opted not to participate. So anyway, so you're left with the incumbent. Another positive spin is I did contact other, through these other companies. They told me that there were, in fact, other communities in the state of Connecticut that did not get any firms to participate in their RFP process. So what they had to do is, in essence, reach out to firms and offer them kind of, under extenuating circumstances, offers to basically rehire an existing auditor. So if there's a positive spin to this, we had the incumbent still expressed interest in doing business with the town. And you have an offer presented to you for those services. As a side note, too, I just wanted to bring something to your attention. The materials that I submitted inadvertently, I don't know how I did this, is you have a copy of the PKF O'Connor Davies submission. You have a copy of the current RFP. But for some reason, when I was basically posting the files, I inadvertently posted the bid results from the previous solicitation. So I can email them to you for discussion later on. Because the fees that are presented as a summary to, to, some of the summary document aren't accurate. Those were from submissions five years ago. The submissions that are listed, or the fees that are listed in the PKF O'Connor are correct. But for some reason, when I transmose in the files, I inadvertently put in the wrong file. So the fees start on page 57, I believe, of the PDF backup. Right, so, so the O'Connor Davies, in their submission, they, they have their fees, and I don't, I don't have the page, the page counts in front of me. But it's almost at the very end of their document. There's, I think it's like three, three pages back. Or actually, it's not the, it's the last page face up. So for fiscal year 2020, or actually for 2022, it's $125,960. For 2023, it's $129,670. For 2024, it's $133,630. And for calendar year or fiscal year ending 2025, And then the remaining year would be $141,330. And I can email that to your committee if that's appropriate.
Can I, we, I believe we have that report, Gerald. Question is, could you confirm what we paid this year for our fees?
Yeah, so the number I have for 2021 is $126,040. So the fee for this year is a slight decrease. So what we have is there was an additional fee, he's calling it an EFS fee, that bumps the number up like $3,600 current year. Next year, it'll be $3710, and it goes up. It's a fee that was billed directly to the Board of Education, but it is captured in the cost that we would pay to them.
So I have a, just one point to make, Madam Chair. Yeah, I believe, so the decline in the overall fee, so the parking authority fee is charged directly to the parking authority?
Right, that's correct.
And so the reason we have a decline in the overall fee, so we do have an inflationary increase in 2022. But the parking authority fee is declines from the prior year because I think they get some efficiencies there as a result of doing it. So that, you know, $5,000, $5,500 decline in the parking authority fee offsets the fee increase for the other components of the audit. So that the regular audit and the EFS fee. And so, and then the notation on the bottom, and I'm, I'm actually on item D of the, of the fee proposal document. Item D has the table showing all of the years. And it looks like after, so there's an inflationary increase of 5% for 2022, which is offset by the decline in the parking authority fee. But, yeah, I mean, not really, because that's not part of the town, town's budget. It's just impacts the total. So the town, for, and the town's budget, it goes up 5% this year and 3% thereafter. I think that's the same for the EFS fee, which is in the, which gets charged directly to the Fairfield Public Schools budget.
Correct. Yeah, so it's, it is, it's, it ends up depending on, you know, who's paying what. There's, there's an uptick in some regards, but a downtick in the other. In other words, the town's paying more, but parking authority fee pays less. And to what Ms. Charlin said, is, is it basically economies of scales. Under the previous one, the parking authority was an add-on, now it's included. So because of that, it's, it's, there's economies of scale. And in essence, it's saving us a little bit of money overall.
So is this audit fee for 2022 of 111, 240, is this, how does this compare to, I guess, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, this is a question for you. How does that compare to what we have budgeted for 2022?
I'll have to look this up. If you just give me a minute.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, I, I guess my take on this overall, I'll just to comment, is I think this is very, I think this is reasonable, given that, that, you know, market. And I do, I do understand that this is happening at all tiers with the, the audit firms. There is, you know, there are staffing constraints, everyone's busy. And so, you know, taking on additional work, I'm not, I guess I'm disappointed, but not surprised we didn't get more responses to the RFP. But coming out of this with just a 5% increase is probably as, as good as we could have hoped for.
Yep, I agree. And I guess I have a question for Gerald. If there's any takeaways that we should note in our minutes for five years from now, when we need to send out a RFP, if there's any timing changes that we should do? Or anything that we should change in the process that would make the process better?
Right, so my suggestion would be, is that we basically move the timeline for the solicitation back a couple months. Based on feedback that I received after we'd gotten submissions in, a lot of the firms said that, there, much as you would think that they would have enough time to do, to make their submission, they said that they're, basically, there's other competing forces. So if we were issuing RFP earlier, in essence, it would be basically on a, we'll call it like a blank canvas. So that in theory, other people aren't out there looking for the same services. So what you would do is you would become like kind of the only fish in the pond. And so they, it would give them basically more opportunity to kind of think about participating in the process. My other suggestion perhaps is perhaps maybe not wait until five years. Maybe start dipping your toe in either years three, four, or five. And then you can make that determination. Right now, you, you appointed the auditor on an annual basis. So my thought would be is you have, you know, you have an offer that will extend you out before five years. But it may or may not be in your best interest to go there. When you do, in fact, do your next RFP, there's going to be an uptick in the fee, no matter which, which way you utilize this. And the firms have told me that their first year of the engagement, it's going to be more costly. So the further out you go, that uptick will potentially be higher. So in essence, if you're going out in that sixth year, I'm sorry, the fifth year going on to the sixth year, it would be a much larger, potentially larger uptick in terms of the overall costs.
Does the committee have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just, as we go forward, one of the other things we might think about doing is, to the extent it's possible, is trying to, you know, benchmark our fee. I know that our audit fee is included as a separate line item in our budget. And so it's publicly available. I don't know if it's evident in other towns' budget documents. But, you know, it would just be good to know. I, I think this overall, you know, this is not a, a large audit fee from the perspective of the firm. So I, it's hard to understand if it's competitive or not. But that would, since we didn't get any other RFPs, or any other responses to the RFP, that would just be helpful to know.
Yeah, so hi, this is Gerald Foley. So to that point, I could, in the next month or two, we can do it with Jared's assistance. We could poll the GFA, GFOA members and look for towns that are equivalent size dozen. There's, there's no, I think it's about a half a dozen of them. And we could ask them what they're paying for their audit fee. Part of it's going to be is when they, when their contracts commence and when they're ending. So it might not be an apples-to-apple comparison. I think now, because of the, the costs and escalations, I think that our number may be, you know, again, it's hard, hard to bench until we get the, the overall numbers from the other. But at least we can make that effort to, to get the information for you.
That would be helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I can give you that number that's budgeted. It's $94,240. It's what was budgeted in the fees and professional services for the Board of Finance, which is what covers this fee.
Did you say 94 or 92?
$94,240.
And is that just the audit, like our audit fee portion? Does that include the parking authority and, and the Board of Ed piece?
It wouldn't include the parking authority.
So if I did my math right, Mr. Schmidt, our, our budget is short by $11,675.
Sounds right.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions? Okay, so I think our next step is we have to make a decision if we want to recommend this to the Board of Finance later on tonight. So I guess, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we are going to vote to recommend to the Board of Finance the acceptance of the bid and the reappointment of the independent auditors for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So three yeses, no abstentions, and no noes. So now we will, sorry, I took my finger off the button. We will go on to the next item on our agenda to hear an update on the internal control reports. And we have Connie Saxel with us today to provide some information to us. Thank you for coming today, Connie.
Oh, thank you for inviting me. Connie Saxel, Town Internal Auditor. So tonight, I'm going to present to you a report of internal audit work that I performed for the four-month period commencing January 1 through April 30th, 2022. During this time, there were three internal audits performed. Regular follow-up meetings were conducted with the town departments to monitor compliance with the DPW Independent Audit Report and Findings. One town policy was written. And a variety of financial and accounting work was conducted during this time as well. As you already probably know, I've told you in the past, that final internal audit reports are distributed to the chief fiscal officer, the department head, and other appropriate parties directly involved in the audit after draft reviews and discussions are held. Recommendations are made within the audit reports. They are discussed with department heads and tracked internally on a matrix for compliance. Typically, department heads adhere and comply to the audit recommendations as soon as they are notified of them. Sometimes, this occurs even before the audit report is finalized. Open audit recommendations are followed up through emails with department heads, sample testing to ensure compliance, interviews with department staff, and onsite physical observations of office practices, as well as reviews of their reports and other documents. So I will recap the three audits, reports for you. They were provided as backup also the other day from the First Select Woman's Office. So the first audit is Building Department Online Permit Revenue. I examined the revenue generated from customer payments received for, from online permits issued by the Building Department from January 8th, 2022, which is the inception of the online permit program, through March 9th, 2022, along with their corresponding internal controls. During that report, I had a few recommendations. One is where I recommended that the monthly annual report obtained from the Municity database be used to obtain the construction value for permits issued over a required period of time, rather than adding these values manually from individual reports on a, on a daily basis. This will eliminate manual, the manual task of gathering data that can easily and readily be obtained through Municity, which is the software program. The department agreed and complied. I also recommended that the department had reviewed the MS Permit Report on a weekly basis to ensure that the proper construction value has been entered and the correct fee has been collected for all permits issued by the Building Department. Any anomalies should be researched and corrected. A copy of the reviewed and approved MS Permit Report should be submitted to Finance. And the original document should be maintained on file in the Building Department until audit. Adherence to this recommendation will strengthen internal over permits issued, fees collected, and also reduce the potential for losses in revenue. The department had agreed and complied. All receipts generated per the daily permit reports for online payments for the period examined were reconciled daily by the department and they were recorded correctly as to general ledger account amount. And period deposited, all online daily collections were traced to the town bank account deposits without exception. All permit fees paid were recalculated based upon construction value without exception. Do you have any questions on the online permitting from the department?
No, I'm glad you did that, though, because I think getting it right from the start is important.
This is something definitely new for the town. We've been wanting to implement the online permitting system for a long time. The staff, the department heads have all been great and really thought and made it work. So we're very pleased with that.
Okay, and, and the payment process has worked and hasn't been too much of an issue?
They, every day, they get daily reports. The money's been directly deposited into our town general fund bank account. I haven't found any disparities or discrepancies. I mean, it did take in the beginning a few, you know, the trial and error, the inspectors, you know, learn, there was a learning process on how to, you know, implement the system, how to maneuver through all the reports and how to enter construction values. But they've been doing a great job.
So now contractors don't have to actually go to town hall to paper permit and?
Correct, they can apply online. I believe they still have to come to the town hall to scan their documents. Or they, if they have them already scanned at home, they can submit those files as well to the Building Department. It eliminates a lot of paper.
That's great, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Saxel, for that report. I just, I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't miss it when you were saying it. I'm just flipping through the report and the, where you have the various, these small errors that you identified?
Correct, yes.
Can you just tell us a little more about that? So were those training issues?
Those were, yeah. When the online permitting system was being implemented, there was a learning curve where the inspectors weren't quite sure how to enter construction values, enter permits, how the fees were applied. And so once I had brought it to their attention, there was one, one instance where a permit, there was no fee charged to the contractor at all. So when I brought it to the department head's attention, and he spoke to the inspector, and the inspector said, oh, my goodness, I made a mistake. And we showed him how to do it properly, he understood. And it was corrected. And the, actually, the contractor was notified, the fee was paid. But there's going to always be a learning early months of a new system. So they seem to have pretty much gotten a grasp of it at this point.
And how many users are there of the system, inspectors?
I believe we have about, I'm not sure, about at least four inspectors in the Building Department. And then there's the building official.
Okay, so it's, it's not a big deal in terms of getting everybody up to speed. There's a limited number of
Right, right, it's not a huge
Types of errors you found, it's just, there's
Right, right.
People needed to get
And I anticipate that over time with use, and once they become more comfortable with it, the errors will be, you know, non-existent. And even, that's why I had recommended that the department head just review the reports. And, you know, make sure it doesn't, and there's nothing, you know, that looks unusual or out of whack on the report. Sign off on it, give it to us, I'll take a second look at it. You know, and perhaps maybe it won't be needed on a weekly basis. Then it could be maybe a monthly basis and so on. You know, once things seem to be flowing smoothly.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second audit was an audit of Greenway Property Services invoices paid from July 2021 through February 2022. I examined the invoices by the Town Way Property Service month period from July 1, 2021 through February 28, 2022. The scope of the audit consisted of 100% audit sample of invoices submitted and paid to the vendor. Forty-seven invoices were examined totaling $1,035,951 and 11 cents. Due to a cost of living adjustment unilaterally applied by the vendor and the lack of cross-referencing invoices to bid award amounts by the department, it was recommended that the Parks Department cross-reference all invoices submitted by the vendor to the bid award pricing sheet in order to ensure accuracy prior to payment. All increases in vendor rates noted must comply with the written terms documented in the bid award, as well as future bid awards, which include advanced written notice of an agreed-upon cost of living allowance between the town and vendor. The department agreed and complied. Irrigation invoices were not itemized and therefore could not be traced to awarded bid rates. Therefore, it was recommended that the Parks Department request that the vendors submit irrigation repair invoices that are itemized to reflect the price per the bid award multiplied by labor hours to ensure proper billing to the town on these jobs. The department agreed and complied. Six out of 47 invoices were paid for materials and labor that fell outside the terms of the bid award. It was recommended that future bids include language to incorporate a set hourly labor and machinery rate for occasions where field maintenance or repair services are required from the awarded vendor and where proper quotes or bidding is not feasible due to sole source, time constraints, or other emergency circumstances. These awarded rates per bid These awarded rates per bid should be used for billing on all future jobs that fall into this category. The department And lastly, a comprehensive list of town fields and associated square footage was not supplied in the bid document. Therefore, it was recommended that a complete and comprehensive list of town fields, including Board of Education and associated square footage be included in future bid documents. Invoices billed for fertilization and overseeding should not exceed the square footage documented on the field list included in the bid. The square footage sheet should be cross-referenced to invoices submitted for rate and fee accuracy. The department agreed. Any questions?
So have these items been also discussed with the purchasing department?
Yes, they have. And what transpired out of the was the bid award does allow for a cost of living increase. However, the cost of living increase is should be agreed upon between the town and the vendor. However, the vendor took it upon himself to implement a cost of living increase on his own without notifying the town, even though he would have probably, he most likely would have gotten that cost of living increase anyway, because it was part of the bid award. But normally, it would have been agreed upon between both parties. So when I was checking the invoices, I noticed that the invoices were rates were higher than the bid award rates and nobody knew why. And then finally, we contacted the vendor and he had said, yes, I applied a cost of living adjustment to these rates. So I checked on the Connecticut website and the cost of living rate was correct and proper. So I discussed it with purchasing and they said, okay, it's fine. And we would have given him that authorized to that cost of living increase anyway. However, in the future, if the department had been cross-referencing, they would have noticed immediately that this cost of living increase had been applied.
But is there more detail that we should be putting into our bids so?
Well, I did recommend that, well, definitely the department head now is aware that if that they will be cross-referencing and every rate on it should agree to an award rate. So there should be no discrepancies. However, I did suggest that sometimes we do use the same vendor in turn when there's emergency circumstances and there's not time to go out for an RFP. And we already know this vendor is the best vendor for pricing and we use them for other jobs, such as field maintenance and so forth. So I had suggested, well, why don't you get a set rate, hourly labor rate for your, for the vendor in other fee rates established in case there is an emergency circumstance? This is the price that they will, that you will pay for these jobs instead of, you know, just accepting a flat sum for a job. So I had recommended that. And then just more comprehensive detail of the fields, because they, the vendor does bill us based on field square footage. Some of the fields I couldn't determine what the square footage was. And I just wanted to make sure that we're paying the proper price for the square footage of these fields. However, a new bid had gone out and I believe that they are going to streamline it because the fee schedule, I attached it to the report. It was extremely cumbersome. There's so many fields and there's so many different types of services that the vendor provides. And cross-referencing was extremely cumbersome. So I believe they're going to have an easier and better method of payment that to be applied for mowing, field seeding, aerating, and so forth. That'll make it much easier to track and cross-reference.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm not sure who this goes to. First of all, thank you again, Ms. Saxel for the audit, great work. So it sounds like we, any amounts paid by the town were appropriate. But I, I think what bothers me about this is the notion of people signing off on invoices without checking the prices. And so, so now they, so that was a training issue, but it just seems like such a basic thing to do that I, I find that a little bit troubling. I guess, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Schmidt. So we get these invoices, somebody is supposed to be checking them to making, make sure the prices are right. They didn't do that appropriately. They signed off in any event, turned out to be okay in the end. When they send those invoices for payment and Mr. Schmidt, I guess that flows through to someone in your department for payment. You, you look for what to see that the department head has approved? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for a number of things and it depends on what the level of the payment is. Will determine what the workflow of that order is. And so, you know, we would look for the, the dollar amount of that invoice and also check to see, make sure that it's, that the project is under budget. So there, you know, there would be a number of things that we'd be looking for.
Okay, but in terms of, you're relying on the, on the department approval. For you, so you're not checking payments against them. When you get it, as long as it's approved by them, you are assuming that they have checked that detail. And so you rely on that for payment versus it's not your department that would check against a bid?
Not, not as a practice, they, they are in the best position to know that information.
And that's appropriate. So that's why I just, and I'm, I'm wondering, Ms. Saxel, this seems to me to be such a basic control that I, I'm wondering if and notwithstanding the fact that it turned out to be okay, but are there other department heads that need? Or do we need some training on this in general across the board?
Well, I believe that the Parks Department was recently segregated from the DPW operations. So there were new employees involved in the whole Parks payment of invoices. So in fairness, again, because they were new and this was a new process for them. And that was part of the reason why I wanted to look at the payment of the invoices. And now that they're aware that this is what they need to do, they, they will be going forward, checking all the invoices to the bid award documents to ensure that they agree. And, and this is a lot of money that is being spent on our field maintenance and mowing and other, you know, town areas. So we want to make sure that, especially those large payments to these vendors. We want to make sure those are definitely double-checked.
So is this a, is this a training issue or a policy issue?
I would imagine more of a training issue that the department head should instruct their employees that they need to prior to payment. Just make sure that the rates and the fees are correct prior to payment. And they're aware of that now and they are going to be double-checking.
Yeah, it seems like it's a training matter. When you, when you put your signature on something, the expectation is you've done certain things and making sure you've got the, the price that agrees with the bid is a pretty basic one. So, and, and if, if you're saying that that was a training issue because we had a new, you know, reconstituted department with new people
It was a restructuring of the department, so they, they were not aware of it. And then previously, we did have a person who had retired from DPW, who her main job was to double-check all the contracts. She had retired, so now we need a, there's a new person taking over those duties. So, but they are now, now aware that this is what they need to do. And plus, you know, we do have, do our budgetary analyses. We see if things are, look like they're going out of budget. That's a sign that we need to double-check and look and see why, if something's amiss.
Well, thank you again for doing this work. I'm glad that we you know, identified this issue because turns, turns out okay, but you know, I, I would hate to rely on a budget to actual analysis to pick up things like this. Cause there's a, you know, it would have to probably be large before you could pick it up in that manner.
Right, right.
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the Greenway Property Services? I have one quickie, last one. Well, hopefully, we'll see. The last one is registrar voters review of the pink postcard mailing and seasonal and part-time payroll process. In November twenty twenty-one, Matthew Wagner, registrar voters, decided to prepare an in-office postcard mailing based on Connecticut Public Act twenty-one dash two that allowed voters to request that their names and addresses not be disclosed in pu- in future public record requests and be treated as confidential for public records for their safety. For Mr. Wagner, he was conducting a sample mailing in order to determine how many voters would be interested in this program and whether it should be incorporated in a notice to all voters in the future. He randomly selected a hundred names from the Connecticut voter registration list to be included in the sample mailing. The Secretary of State subsequently notified the town of Fairfield that the pink postcard mailing activity was not within the purview of the registrar voters statutory authority. A review of two emails dated March twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty twenty-two from Connecticut Secretary of State Staff Attorney Aida Carini revealed that she had instructed the registrar voters office on February third, twenty twenty-two to send a corrective letter to the one hundred voters who had received the pink postcard mailing, along with an official Secretary of State form. Town Attorney Baldwin and I had also recommended that the registrar's office adhere to the Connecticut Secretary of State's instructions as well. This has not been done by the registrar of voters office to date. It was further recommended that the registrar voters obtain prior approval from the state of Connecticut for any proposed future mailings which may be considered atypical or outside of the realm of typical standard acceptable department mailing. Only state-approved authorized forms and pre-formatted sample letters offered by the state should be used by the registrar voters. Sample test-based mailings on a random group of individuals should not be conducted, but rather should be made without bias to all individuals on the Connecticut voter registration list. All individuals on the Connecticut voter registration list should be treated equally and have the same opportunities available to each person. A review of the hours and types, now this is a part of the payroll review. A review of the hours and type of work performed by the assistant registrar and the two deputy registrars fall more appropriately into the category of part-time employment rather than seasonal employment. These employees are not deemed temporary and are required to work part-time hours for the department throughout the year and they're paid via munis payroll instead of pink internal voucher. It was recommended that the expense related to these employees be budgeted and charged to part-time employment rather than seasonal employment. Are there any questions regarding the pink postcard mailing or the seasonal and part-time payroll?
Did you, did you say that they haven't implemented your recommendation yet?
Correct.
Are they going to or you don't know?
I have left it in Town Attorney Baldwin's hands at this point.
Thank you.
Can you just? And thank you for that question, Mr. Mantola. Can you also explain the objection from the state to this was that it was done on a sample basis versus everyone or that it was done at all?
Because it was created in-house by the registrar voters. It wasn't the standard state of Connecticut form. It wasn't the standard state of Connecticut application. And they had recommended that he cease and follow proper procedures as recommended by their office.
Just so I understand, what, what exactly is the corrective action that, that needs to be taken and hasn't been taken yet?
So he had, the corrective action was for him to send a corrected letter, which I have, there's a sample of it in the report. He was to send that corrected letter to each of those one hundred people as well as the official state form that they were to fill out and send back.
Okay, so the correct, so he has to send a corrected letter and the corrected letter, is it, is it substantively different or it, does it sort of?
There, there are slight differences. There are some differences to their letter versus what was submitted by the registrar voters.
Okay, thank you. Maybe when you give us an update, next time you can just let us know. I mean, typically when you provide these reports, I don't recall ever getting a report that we still had open recommendations on. Maybe you can give us an update next time.
I, I do follow up on, on all the audit recommendations and departments do comply, sometimes a little longer than I'd like, but they, they do comply. Yeah, this one was a little tricky because Mr. Wagner felt he was within, I believe, felt he was within his right to perform this mailing.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions or anything else to present?
No. Not on the internal audit reports at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is item number five, to hear an update on the status of the implement, implementation of the DPW audit. And I guess this feels like it's been going on quite a while. So I want to know if there's anything current going on and where we are in the progress.
Yes, I have been meeting and working with the applicable department heads and following up on the audit findings and recommendations addressed in the DPW audit report dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty. We're almost there at the two-year mark. And follow-up meetings with the department heads have been positive. They've been open, responsive with complying with the audit recommendations. The status as of today, seventy-six findings and recommendations. Forty-four are deemed fully implemented. Six were deemed not applicable. Twenty-six are partially complete and are in progress at this time. Of these twenty-six items, seventeen relate directly to the new updated purchasing policy and those will be addressed upon its implementation. This leaves a balance of nine items that remain open or in process. And these audit findings and recommendations are tracked on a matrix spreadsheet, thanks to Lori Charlton. And the details in this, of these recommendations are documented on that spreadsheet. So the status of some of the remaining open and in-process items. Building Conservation and the Town Planning and Zoning Departments are fully operational with the new online permitting system. I've been working with these departments and instructing them on preparation of reporting online credit card and electronic check receipts from customers to finance. I've also prepared written policies and procedures which have been explained and distributed to the department. Formed an audit of the building department, online credit card and electronic check receipts, and assisted them in eliminating manual efforts for reporting purposes. I established department head a review and approval of daily permit reports, as well as instructing them on obtaining the required reports for the state of Connecticut. Secondly, departments in process for online permitting implementation are the Fire Marshal's Office and the Health, Sewer and Engineering Departments. Each department takes approximately two months apiece to be fully implemented. The new DPW finance position is now budgeted in the finance department budget. I've had conversations with the Director of DPW who told me that the person who fills this position would be handling the town capital projects and other DPW financial and accounting tasks. The DPW Garage completed their annual physical inventory of the parts room. No material differences between counts and inventory on hand were noted. The town has selected a vendor for the new town website, which will incorporate a new Q Alert system, which will be more user-friendly and will streamline the entire Q Alert system for DPW service requests. The new DPW road maintenance software has been implemented and is being utilized by the department. It is meeting DPW's needs for tracking and development of major paving proj- projects and their costs. Are there any questions?
So I just want to make sure I understood. So there were nine that you consider open and it sounds like those are pretty much all in progress?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. I was gonna ask the same thing. Do you, could you, um, at our next meeting, provide, um, a written summary of anything that's still open? And if, or in process, and so we can understand what the status is? I think the purchasing policy is a, has a life of its own, so we can kind of keep that separate. But the other nine, um, you know, whatever they are, it would just be helpful. Cause we, at this point, hopefully we, we can shut those down for good.
Yes, and feasible, but see if, uh, those.
And, and if we're saying they're not feasible or not applicable, the other thing that would be helpful, and I don't remember, because we may have gone through this before, anything that we've deemed not feasible, maybe we could just have that summary too with the rationale. Is it cost? Is it impracticality? Is it, um, is it, uh, you know, immaterial in terms of risk? Just, just so that we, that we, that we understand why, um, you know, why it was determined that we didn't need to comply with that one.
Definitely. You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, I think that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, so should we move on to our next item? Uh, yeah, are you, are you done or?
That's all you have?
Um, are there, are there more items?
No, there are no more items, thankfully.
Yes, thank you again for a great report.
Oh, thanks. No problem. I know it's, it's somewhat, sometimes can be a dry, uh, information, but you know, it's important information.
I for one always find your reports fascinating, so I don't know what that says about me.
You know, it's funny, some, you're, you're, you'd be surprised how some people tell me they love to read my reports. I'm like, ooh, boy.
I, I think the whole board appreciates it, the whole Board of Finance, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if it's because Lori and I are accountants or what, but I do enjoy them.
Oh, good. I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad. All right, thank you.
And I don't know if you want to stay, stay to hear about the purchasing?
Yeah, I'll stay, I'll stay. I'll, I'll stay and hear you about the purchasing policy, sure.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number six, which is to hear the status on the purchasing policy. And we have our purchasing policy committee here, um, Krista Witt and Lori Charlton. Um, so, so they will be able to give us an update on where they are.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Claire. Good, good evening, good evening. It's a, it's a pretty quick update. I was just trying to find in my phone, so, and I couldn't. Uh, but about two, two weeks ago, there was a meeting held at, um, here, in fact, right? To discuss, uh, the purchasing policy and, uh, have any discussions with Gerald Foley and Tom Bremer in regards to the Board of Ed and, and their interpretation of the purchasing policy. Much to my surprise, when I came in, um, the Board of Ed had not been delivered the purchasing policy. So, um, I took that action and I delivered the policy last week, right? Is that right? Thank you for reminding me. So, the status right now, and I've asked, uh, Mr. Foley for, for an update. Uh, Mr. Foley's working with Mr. Santafanti, um, and coordinating the, the last results that, or last comments that, uh, Ms. Charlton and I incorporated. Um, I don't have a current status on that. The Board of Ed now is in possession of the working document of the purchasing policies. And, um, they haven't had a whole lot of time to review it, especially probably in the last week with the, with the budget hearings. So, um, the good news is that they do have it and they're on the hook to, um, to give us our, to give them comments back on that.
Excellent.
Yes, well, yeah, I'm sorry it's not a little more, uh, definitive, but believe me, um, we, we want to close that out and close those 17 audit findings out in one fell swoop. So, so believe me, we're, 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 we, as in Ms. Charlton and I, are, are actively, um, talking to Mr. Bremer and seeing how we can expedite that, so.
And, uh, Mr. Dewitt, could you just maybe, um, so that the, uh, can you just maybe talk a little bit about the, the policy or the sections of the policy the Board of Ed is focusing on? Obviously, the policy is applied broadly across the town and, and the Board of Education, but I think there were a couple of areas of the policy that present, or, or the old policy that presented challenges, let's say, to the Board of Education. And can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, the, one of the, there's, there's really, if, if I could break it down, the, the two problems that the Board of Ed really has with the current purchasing system, I'll say, right? Is that they just can't get, um, POs generated fast enough to, that turns into, you know, getting people or, or services or things in place fast enough. So they've, they've always had an issue with how fast the PR and the purchase requisition and the PO, the purchase order process, how fast that, that gets processed. But, uh, the Board of Ed has a couple of unique items in that, um, they, they, um, I want to be, make sure I'm careful when I say this stuff, right? So there are some instructors or some, um, services, I guess, services provided by, um, professionals that are, uh, very, very limited in, in, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Availability, thank you, that's right, right. So we have some very, um, very knowledgeable people. There's very few of them. And when we need a specific person or a service for an individual child, especially in the special education world, um, we need it like today. So they're paying particular attention to how fast we can expedite PRs, kind of almost emergency POs, you know? And, um, for me, that comes down to a sole source document, right? So source, sole source document in, in, in my words for, for laypeople, is a, um, is a PO where there's an established rate, right? So I always, I always talk about plumbers, right? If the state says, hey, a plumber should cost a hundred dollars an hour, and you find a plumber who's a hundred dollars an hour, a very specific plumber, and I'm not comparing these people to plum, but you know what I mean? And, and the state says it's a hundred bucks an hour and you find a plumber who's a hundred bucks an hour, okay, let's go hire that plumber. Why should we go out to bid and find out that we have a hundred and fifty dollar plumbers or fifty dollar an hour plumbers? Well, these very specific people, we could control under a sole source document. They would come, fall under kind of a sole source document and then we could expedite getting these people on board.
So that appears to match up with what Connie just told us a little while ago with the fields, that there's emergency repair work to a field that needs to be done and they can have a set rate that they could hire someone for.
Yeah, it's, um, I, it, it, it's similar. Um, I'm, I'm reluctant to call this kind of services emergency service. You know, for me, emergency services are, a boiler just blew up yesterday, right? And it's January, we need to process money and we need to get a new boiler in. Even though, even though these are immediate needs, you know, I, I feel like in the purchasing document, a sole source, a real, uh, robust sole source, um, article in that, uh, in that policy will, will cover this kind of stuff.
So sole source versus emergency. I mean, they both, both, both types of, uh, an emergency, you're just gonna go out and get someone without going through a bid process, same with sole source, but there's different criteria and documentation and, uh, you know, I think things to sort of check off. And so that's, that's what, that, that's the focus of, of, uh, the Board of Education.
Right, right. And, and, um, I did, I did, you know, talk to the Board of Ed the last time about, well, actually, I want to be clear. Even though a Board of Ed member was there, it was, it was central office we were speaking to, Ms. LaBourias and, 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 um, Mr. Mancusi. So it was, you know, Board of Ed was represented, but it was really a central office discussion, just so we're a hundred percent clear. But the nice thing about sole source is if there's a specific service needed for, um, a special education, uh, child, right? And there's only five people in the whole state that can do this, we create a list and those five people go on the list. And then when that need arises, we don't have to go out to bid, you know? And we can preemptively call these people and say, well, you're the only five people in the state, you know, you, just give me your rates. And if one is a couple of dollars different than the other, who really cares? But the problem seems to be, and, and it's not an exaggeration to say there's only five people in the whole state. In fact, they were telling me, there's one case, there was only like two people in the whole state that could have take, that could have provided the service for this one particular child. And, um, um, but when you create these lists, it makes it, it, it's, it's a very auditable thing to have a nice list that says, you know, is, is I think you would attest to, right? You know, you're on the list, we've vetted you already, we don't have to go through this, you know, um, requisition, actually, you don't even have to go through requisition process, right? You just write a PO and sign it off to these people and they could literally be there in 24 hours, right? And that's a long-winded answer to a, sorry, but it's, it's a, it's a, you know, again, from an audit perspective, it's, I think it's very important. And it's, it's, you know, the purchasing policy, you know, everyone's gonna have to adhere to everything, right? It's not gonna be a Board of Ed policy and then a town policy, it's gonna be one policy. But that's, that's really where the Board, sorry, that's where central office is really, um, you know, looking to ma- make sure it's robust enough for their needs.
Any other questions or comments? I, I do have one myself, and that is, um, because this has been going on so long, do you have a timeline planned on getting the purchasing policy implemented?
Turn on your mic when you say that.
It's up to us or if we have to rely on?
If it, I, I, I could truly say if it were up to, um, Ms. Charlton and I, it would be next week, right? Uh, I, I, I don't have a, a, a real good answer for you. Um, it's, again, uh, right now, it's, it's, um, it's a coordination between Mr. Foley and Mr. Santafanti, um, is, is an outside service, an outside service under contract. And then the, the other complication is that we need Board of Ed to, to weigh in on the particular, you know, the particulars. So I'd like to think that between Mr. Foley and Mr. Santafanti, we could get 85, 90% of the way and that last 10% is gonna be the tweaks for the, for the Board of Ed. So I, I feel like, you know, I, I don't want to be overly pessimistic about this. I feel like this is a late summer, early fall thing. Would you agree with that? I don't, I'm not saying do you have to like it? Is it, makes sense?
We did just mention we're reaching our two-year anniversary with the audit on May 20th.
Yeah. Oh, so yeah, so we won't make May. No, but, but, you know, yeah, I, 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 I would, I would think, um, late summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, any other questions or comments or? Okay, um, so now I guess we'll move on to our final, final, um, well, it's number seven on our agenda, to discuss and plan our agendas for the remainder of the year. So I guess I wanted to get the committee's input on where you think we are, what, and what we want to accomplish in this next fiscal year. We're, we're hoping to finish this PDW audit and purchasing policy. And, and then we also have to oversee the audit. But are there other things or comments that you wanted to make? Or timeline, how often you think we need to meet? I was originally thinking about quarterly, but it, that's up to you.
Whatever, whatever the committee wants to do is fine with me. Quarterly seems fine with me.
Yeah, I, I think quarterly's fine. I think, um, you know, typically we, I, do we have a meet? We typically have a meeting in June, which is an audit, planning meeting for the external audit. And, um, at that time, uh, the auditor typically goes through their audit plan with us and their risk assessment and what areas they're gonna focus on and we can, um, we can deal with that. We usually meet with the auditors twice a year?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, so, so we'll be planning and then it'll be when he's got the draft financial statements for us. So I think, uh, I think that makes sense. And then I, I, I do think, um, continuing to meet with Ms. Saxel and understanding, what's going on in the internal audit world and then bringing those, um, you know, bringing those findings back to the full Board of Finance. I, I really think it's helpful to meet twice a year with, for Ms. Saxel with the Board of Finance. And, you know, we can think about, um, you know, format or, um, you know, what that looks like. Generally, you've been going through your full set of reports with the Board of Finance and I think everyone really appreciates that. So I'm not sure that, I mean, I, I think this board doing it, we would be alerted to anything that might, um, you know, that we might want to focus on. But ultimately, whatever you go through with us, you're, you're gonna go through with the book, the whole Board of Finance is sort of in the practice and I, I think that's fine. So I don't, I don't, in terms of scope of what, um, we need to do, the, the big thing this year was the Audit RFP and that's done.
Right.
And so I, I don't.
And was easier than expected.
For good or for bad, it was, yeah.
Okay, so in June, we will take a look at the, the audit and see if we can get Joe Santafani to come meet with us for his audit planning. And then, um, I guess we will also do that late fall again, as he's wrapping up his audit. Um, and then maybe in September, we might want to follow up on, um, the DPW audit and purchasing to make sure that has continued to move, move along and to get, get it to the Board of Finance level so we can approve it and get it into action.
Yeah, and particularly with the, the open items on the DPW audit. So less the statistics and more maybe a deep dive into the open and, and in-process items.
Okay. Okay, so Connie, would you be able to, in, in September, report back to us on those nine open items, the, the ones with the purchasing policy? If, if that's ready to go? And, and then the ones that are, 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 that were not applicable, that we couldn't do?
Yes, definitely. And, uh, if you want it sooner, that's fine too. You let me know.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But if you have the report put together, it's fine.
Yeah, all right.
We've been spending way too much time together the last few months, so.
Okay, any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, um, so then I think we can move on to our last item on the agenda, which is to adjourn, uh, all in, do I need a motion or a second? And all in favor? Aye. Thank you.